Just give me the warning.
I'm a producer now.
What do I, I, you gonna?
Executive producer.
Call it a meeting?
Yeah.
Set?
Yeah.
I'll ask the clerk for a roll call.
Counselor McCuppo is absent. Counselor T. Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Taylor, he's a, huh, Counselor Lopez.
Yeah.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Present.
And Counselor Abisenada, Counselor Brown, Counselor Vido, Counselor DeJesus, and Counselor Garcia, Judy.
Counselor Brown will be joining us.
On the way.
But in essence of time, I'll ask the clerk to read the call of the meeting.
Follow me. The following subject matter will be discussed. Discuss the independent audits for FY 2020. Officials invited to attend, all on with members of the council, city manager Tom Ambrosino, city auditor Edward Dunn, Roselli and Clark Associates, all members of the public.
Oh, okay. At this time, I'll, I'll ask the city auditor, Eddie Dunn, if you want to make an opening remarks.
Yes.
To explain to the body where we are and why we're at this point.
Yes.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You gotta go to the podium.
Okay. Calvin's here, oh Calvin's here.
I'm sorry about that.
Thanks, Al.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Dunn. I'm the city auditor. With us tonight is our assistant city auditor, Sochet Toda, and representatives of our independent audit firm, Roselli, Clark and Associates, Tony Roselli and Paul Gargano. We are here tonight to talk about the FY 20 audit and financial reports. It is important to keep in mind that this is FY 20, not FY 21. We're a bit behind on this because of COVID and, and other things that we needed to get through in order to gather all this information. It's important information for you all to hear, but it's also important to put it into context that we are in fiscal 22 and we're in the process of finishing fiscal 21's audit. So this information is from the year prior fiscal 20, but important nonetheless for you to review. If you have any questions afterward, I encourage you to, to ask the gentleman at the table or me later on if, if you choose. Thank you.
So I apologize for being late. Just talking to the president regarding this meeting. I wanted to attend to another meeting I was at. So again, counselors, this is something that we have to have annually. It's giving us an update on our audit. We're here tonight. The, the overview of the audit, as Mr. Dunn has stated, we are behind because of COVID. We're hoping tonight we can get some feedback from you over the past years and also identify some weaknesses. If we have any that you see anything that's threatening, that we should be aware of. And again, I apologize for being here. And if you want to give us a presentation, you can give us a presentation.
Sure. My name's Tony Roselli. This is Paul Gargano, and we're both partners with Roselli, Clark and Associates. Thank, thank you for having us tonight. So as has been mentioned, this is a 2020 audit. We're in the process of doing 21, so hopefully we'll be back not a year from now, but maybe later, you know, in the late part of the summer or the middle of the summer, we'll be back and get back on a, a good schedule. With the COVID and everything, the city relies on a lot of outside. You need to get an OPEB report, a pension actuarial. There's just a lot of things that you need to rely on from the outside. And all of that got bottlenecked with, with the pandemic. So the city, like a lot of other communities, it was behind and is in the process of catching up. So, so I commend the city for actually getting through this really challenging time. So today I'm going to talk about, or tonight I'm going to talk about the economic trends. So we'll, we'll talk about where you are with your reserves and where they're trending and how you compare. We'll talk about your bond rating because it's very important to the city is the bond rating. You do a lot of capital. So we'll talk about how to maintain it and, and what you need to do to keep that very good bond rating that you have. I'm going to talk about OPEB. There's been some interesting developments in OPEB that are helping the city. Pension, same thing. And then we'll talk about some informational items and observations, which would be any findings that we had. So that's what we're going to talk about today. And excuse me if I haven't mentioned it, but the PowerPoint is what I'm following, if everyone can follow along. So the first thing I just, for those of you who are new to the process, I just wanted to describe, what do we do in an audit? And the first thing the public thinks is you're, you're doing an audit, you're going to look at everything, you're going to find everything. If, if somebody had, you know, taken something for $5, you know, you're going to know where it is. That's really not what an audit is. An audit is more of a, a process that is put out by the, the GAGAS, which is the government accounting office in, in Washington. It's called the Yellow Book. So they give us the procedures that we perform. In the process of performing those procedures, if we see something that we believe is unusual, that requires further investigation, that could lead to a, a misappropriation, that's how that would, that would fall out. We don't come in looking for misappropriation when we do the audit. So just so everyone understands. And this audit really is intended to go out to all your bondholders. So you have folks that invest in the City of Chelsea bonds. They get a report every year to see how the city is doing. It's also sent to the federal government to see if you're in compliance with your federal grants. The, the Division of Local Services, which is the state office, gets a copy of the report to see if there's anything they need to be involved with. So that's the basic reason for the audit. I'm happy to report that there was a clean opinion, which means that we had no qualifications. We did have minor findings, which we'll talk about. But, but to rise to the level of qualifying the opinion, there would have to be such a severe event in the city that would cause us to do that. And there was no such thing as a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And please ask questions as, as we go, if you have any. So let's move along to economic trends. And I mean, this is a great slide.
Page four?
Page, page four, yes. Page four, economic trends. So the city's balances that are in reserves, the way the bond rating calculates the reserves is over $40 million. About 43 million. You peaked actually back in 2017 at about 45 million. And it looks like you're making your way back there, which is a great, great place to be for the city. You can see that back in 2010, your reserves were very low coming out of the Great Recession. Your reserves were probably 13 to 14 million, which is low for a, a city of this size. If you go to the next page, the reserve ratio, which is calculating your reserves divided by your expenses, is about 27%. If you look at the state average, the state average is about 10%. So you're almost at three times the state average, and the state average is all of the communities in Massachusetts. The high metric that the bond rating agencies look for is 15%. So, so when you go to get your bond rating, they have seven areas that they look at. One of them is your reserve ratio. And 15% puts you in a tier one category for reserve ratio. So with respect to that particular category, you're well above the 15%. So in the eyes of the bondholders, you're in good shape from a solvency standpoint. And the city's balancing its budget, it's meeting its forecasts. So, so a lot of good things to get that reserve ratio where it needs to be. Any questions on those two pages? Those are two pretty important concepts. Okay. Okay. On the next page, I just talked about what, what helped you get to these good numbers, these lofty numbers. So the, the local receipts exceeded forecast by 6.2 million. So last year, there was the, the pandemic, things were, you know, this is actually a great number because if you remember, at the end of 20, you were losing a lot of revenue because of the lockdowns. But you still managed to exceed your forecast by $6.2 million, which is, which is fantastic. A lot of other communities barely, barely got past even on their revenues. Some had deficits in their revenues. But you were 6.2 million in front. The biggest number was the motor vehicle excise when I looked at it. Your expenses were 5.5 million under budget. So you had an, if you add the 5.5 to the 6.2, you had an 11.7 million dollar budget surplus, which was then offset by a planned use of free cash of 10.8 million. So you probably did some, call it capital, like capital items and, and things like that with the free cash. So the net there is about a $1 million net, net positive, which allowed your reserves to increase. Everyone follow that?
Yes. Any questions, counselor? Counselor?
So your, your bond rating is a double A. We can go to the next page, page seven. Your bond rating is a double A, which is very, very good investment grade. It's one step below the triple A. To be honest, because of the demographic profile of the city, it would be very, very difficult to get to triple A. Not impossible, but very difficult just because of the demographic profile, which doesn't measure to like a Wellesley or a Newton. It's just, it's just the income. Well, what they'll do is they'll measure your average income per capita, average income per family, and that kind of lowers your grades. Financially speaking, and solvency speaking, you've got a grade A, a, a triple A profile on the financials, but then the demographics drag you down a little bit. So you, they end up giving you a double A bond rating. And how do you keep that? You keep that by conserving free cash for one-time items. So you like to see that used on capital or a snow and ice deficit. You continue to forecast revenues conservatively. So if you use your free cash and you budgeted revenue conservatively, you, it replenishes it by itself. Look for areas where you can enhance revenues. Look at your local receipts, things that you charge for. When was the last time that you had an increase in different fees that you have? Take a look at that and see if there's any areas where you can increase your revenues. And monitor your budget aggressively, which the city does. City does a great job on its budget. And it, at the end of the year, it does a good job of turning back funds to surplus. Long-term financial projections, always look ahead. Look at what's happening. Three years down the road, do we have a major event? We need to plan for now. City does a very nice job of, of looking five to 10 years down the road. Enforce your financial reserve policies. And one of the things we're going to talk about next is OPEB, your other post-employment benefit liabilities.
I'm sorry, before we just move on, I just want, you know, the counselors, especially we have a new counselor with us, that this report that you're giving us is only up to, is it June 20th for 2020?
Yes.
Okay. I just want us to know, we're in 2022, about to go into the next year. So this is the report leading up to 2020, I mean, 2020, not 21 or 22 included.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions yet, other than what's, okay? So next, let's talk about your OPEB. So OPEB is other post-employment benefits. So what that means is as employees are working for the City of Chelsea, they are earning a benefit each year that they work because at the end of their careers, they will get medical benefits, life insurance, they'll get certain benefits that you all of a sudden will owe them. The accounting standards and the regulations say you need to start calculating that liability now so that you know what it's going to be. So the liability at the end of June 30 of 20 was 160 million. And that was actually a $40 million reduction from the year before where it was over 200 million. So that's good news. That liability came down. And the reason it came down is there was a, a favorable trend in your Medicare premiums. So they were projected to go up 10%, but they actually went down 4%. So there's a 14% swing on your Medicare premiums that had this $40 million impact on the city. The other thing that helped you significantly was moving your OPEB into a fiduciary fund. In the past, it wasn't an OPEB plan. It was a stabilization fund. So you didn't get the benefits of being a plan. So that's helped. Your discount rate is 3.25%, which is on the low end. And the reason it's low is because the amount that you have in the plan, which is about 2.4 million, in relation to the liability, which is 160 million, is very low. So your discount rate has got to be lower. So if that discount rate goes up to say 5%, it has a tremendous impact on your OPEB liability. That starts to drop significantly. So one of the goals we've talked about and advised our clients is when they can, put what you can in OPEB now. You know, fund some now. From what I understand, from some conversations we had prior to the meeting, I believe the city is planning on, once the pension becomes fully funded, there'll be a, what we call a pension windfall that falls out of your budget. That can then be used to, to be more aggressive with OPEB. So, so that, that's a very good plan to have. And when, when is that happening? Is that 2028? So, so it's, it's not, it's not too far off. So, so putting what you can into OPEB now is, is the best step, knowing that you're going to have a lot more coming in, beginning in 28. Any questions on, on OPEB?
Now, we've been looking at it. We know it's a hefty price.
It's out there.
And we know that we should, we have to start investing in it. So we've had this conversation the last few years.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want, you don't want to be in a situation where the, the, the thing that's happening is people are living longer.
Right.
Great news for old guys like me, you know? But, but, but not, not good news for the cities that have to fund the liabilities. So you've got people living into their 90s now, easily, you know, with the medical advancements. And you have to pay their medical, medical benefits. So that, that number's, that life expectancy is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It's stretching out. So it's gonna, you don't want to get out 10 years from now and then all of a sudden you, you, the city goes, you know, has a major financial problem because you can't fund your, your insurance. So it's definitely something to think about. I'm going to skip page nine real quick because I went out of order by accident. And we'll go to the pension liability, which is on page 10, and then we'll come back to page nine. So your pension liability, very similar to OPEB, only it's your retirement benefits. So if you're in the, if you're in the private sector, it's like social security. You know, you retire and you get a, you get a social security check. This is the same thing. If you work in a city, at the end, you get a pension. The city's been doing a great job with this. Right now, you're at 76.5% funded. So you can see that the discount rate being used by the actuary is 7.25 instead of the 3.25 that's used for OPEB. So that reduces your liability significantly. Your pension liability is only 56.7 million. So you're way in the upper tier in the state of Massachusetts. Right now, the average is, Parac put a report out last week, is 65%. So you're 11% above the average on the pension. And you're scheduled to be fully funded by 2028, which is about seven or eight years ahead of most of my other clients. So, so the city's doing a really nice job on the pension side. And you'll see the benefits of that, hopefully, when this is fully funded and you can move some of that money over to funding your OPEB. And great performance on your investments for, for this fiscal, for that fiscal year. 16.1% return. So that was off the charts. Any questions on pension or OPEB before we go into the opera slide?
I got one question. I'm with the pension. I mean, I see that the state average is 65 and ours is 76.5. Does, I mean, are we too aggressive here? I mean, could we lever it off some of that funds for OPEB?
I, I've, I've seen, I've, that's a great question. I've seen that in strategic sessions with other cities and towns. I've seen that talked about. Should we lower what we put in the pension and increase OPEB? Most have taken the position, let's take care of one liability first. You know, let, let's get rid of our pension liability first. We're so close. And then let's focus on OPEB. That's the general consensus, but that is a good question. Some have said, hey, it, the whole thing is really a retirement bucket, the whole thing. So if we lowered some of the pension in pension assessment that we make and increase our OPEB, you know, that's another avenue you can look at with your actuaries to see what the impact is. But, but that is a good question. Most, like I said, are not doing that. They're going fully, full on board with the pension. Getting that out of the way and then moving over to OPEB.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? And Counselor Robinson?
That would, if we did that, that would push out our timeframe to meet our goal of 2028.
Yeah, unless you made it up through investment returns, which we don't count on investment returns really, above the 7%. You've had a couple of very fortunate years, but now we're in kind of a bad investment cycle now. So, so that's an unknown. But it would push it out, for sure.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Real quick on opera. I'm sure you guys have, I thought I would put it in here, even though opera's a 2021.
Got a big meeting tonight. We're voting on it tonight.
Yeah, even though it's a 21, 22 item, I thought it was worth mentioning.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, you were categorized as a non-entitlement community. So you didn't get the 40, 50, 60 million that a lot of the cities around Boston got. You got 11.9 million, still a good sum of money. The spending can be done one of two ways. It's either restricted into four buckets, which is revenue replacement, which can be used for basically anything. Premium pay, which is to pay people that were on the front line, employees that were on the front line during the COVID pandemic. Direct COVID expenses and water-saw cable infrastructure. Those are your four buckets. Or if you've done a revenue replacement calculation, which you probably have done at this point, for year one, if you are, if you can take the whole thing as revenue replacement, that's what I'm recommending. That way you have a very flexible way of, of spending it. The, a rule just came out about a month ago that is allowing a one-time, so if you don't meet, like I have, like the City of Metford, they got 14 or 15 million in the first year as revenue replacement. So if you got 14 to 15 million, you're above your 11.9 and you'd be, you'd be good. But say you're below the 11.9, say you're at six or seven million. But you wanted more, you could actually elect to take a one-time $10 million revenue replacement. So you could call 10, $10 million revenue replacement, but then you're done calculating revenue replacement. So that would be your, your number. And then that 10 million could be used on basically, basically anything in, in the, in the city. So, so that's kind of the, the overview on opera. I mean, we could talk about opera forever. There's so many twists and turns. But that's kind of the overview. Are there any questions on, on that?
No, we, it's interesting, but, but again, this is something that we had a meeting last night. We have a vote tonight. So it's not too much we can input on it right now. But thank you for putting it in there because it is something that we've really been watching the funds and how the funds will be dispersed and allocated. Thank you.
Are you managing it yourself or do you have an outsourced?
No, we have a consultant.
Okay. Yeah.
We also have another 28 million from the state directly.
So you got 28 from the state directly in addition to the 11? The 11 is the county and city piece, right? Oh, excellent. Good news. I, I wasn't aware of that. I was looking at it this afternoon. I didn't see that piece. Yeah, yeah. No, great, great job. Great job. All right, Paul, you want to take over from there?
Sure.
With page 11?
We have one informational item in the management letter. It's been in the management letter for a couple of years now. It's a new lease accounting standard that goes into effect next fiscal year. It's going to require you to mainly capitalize all, all of your leases, all, all of your material leases. Where in the past, a lot of, you know, if you lease, you know, computers or copiers, they usually, usually were just expensed on the books and on the financial statements, and there wasn't much work that needed to be done. Now where you have to capitalize them, it's going to require the departments to maintain a, you know, a perpetual list of all their current leases. And we're going to be needing that, you know, for the audit.
So that's everything? That's everything automobiles, you know, computers, copying machines? And that starts in 2001 or 2022?
That's in 2022, correct.
22, okay. So we missed. All right.
Yeah. It's been threatened to go into place for a number of years, the pandemic, you know, they, they gave you a little more leeway. But now finally, it's, it's, the time has arrived. So we've been, we've been putting this in the management letter to give people a heads up and some time to comply and get the information. Hopefully, hopefully everyone's heeded our warnings and is, are going to be ready for us when we come in.
Well, can I ask why the urgency or why the necessity to put everything in there at this time? We haven't done it in the past years.
You know, it's just the pronouncement that came out. It's a, you know, the government, private sector is actually ahead of the game. So they, you know, they've, they have, they've had it implemented before the government, the government world. So it's, it's just a pronouncement.
2022 is the first year it's required. So we've just been putting reminders in for the financial team to say, hey, you got to go gather these because you don't want to wait till 22 and then start running around City Hall trying to find all the leases. So, so.
So, so where would we see that in this kind of booklet? I mean, what, what would we look on the, to see the leases? Are we looking to see how much is spent? Or we're seeing how much yearly the costs went up to previous years?
It, it's the obligation. So I'm, I'm assuming your school probably has a lot of Chrome, Chromebook leases and, and a bunch of other leases. But those are off the, they're kind of off the books now. That obligation is not on the books. So what that's going to allow visibility to is you've got this big liability that you're paying off every year, just like a bond, that right now is not on the books. So, so it's bringing all that back into the financials.
Yes, if we have like the schools, you talked to the schools, we have, if you have a concession stand, you lease that out, would we have to record that also?
If it was material, yes.
If it's just leased out the building to sell hot dogs, hamburgers, and t-shirts?
It would be lease income in that situation. If you're leasing a concession stand to a third party, it would be lease income. And, and it would be a lease asset, not a liability. But it sounds like that might not be, like meet the threshold of being material if it's a small. We'll, we'll, we're going to look at, at all of them and then, then decide which one is material and which one is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Materiality is quite large for, for the city. And then our actual comments and observations from the management letter. The first two relate to receivables. Parking ticket receivables and fire detail receivables. In the case of parking ticket receivables, I know the city has worked for a number of years trying to get the parking ticket receivables balances on the ledger, which has been accomplished. The city had been recording all the activity. It was just, you know, at the end of 2020, a full reconciliation hadn't been able to be accomplished. So I know the, I know the, the auditing office and the treasurer's office are working on that. I don't know what's sure what the, okay. Right. I, I, I do know in 2019.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn, we'd like to hear what you said.
I said it's not resolved yet.
It's not resolved?
Okay. We are working through that to get it resolved.
Okay.
And I, and I believe one of the things that had, in addition to COVID, I, I know that there was a change of vendor as well. And I believe that, that's really the last step, is getting, getting a good prior balance out of the vendor to be able to reconcile. Fire detail receivables, historically, the city's always reconciled those timely. I know in 2019, there was an issue of turnover and some reports didn't get run. So there was a gap where months weren't getting reconciled. I believe, you know, current activity has been caught up, but they, they're still, because of that, that hiccup back in 2019, a full reconciliation hasn't been able to be accomplished. back in two thousand and nineteen, a full reconciliation hasn't been able to be accomplished, Dunn.
So, we'll, we'll be working that through next fiscal year, and we'll probably be coming to council to ask for a supplement to just zero that out. We don't know exactly what the liability is yet, we'll be working that through in the next several months, and we'll come to the council with a proposal to, to resolve it once and for all, stop pressure.
Any questions, Councilor?
All right, the next item is student activities. These are the funds of, the student activity funds run by the individual schools. Our, you know, in the past, we had the, the comment, there was two items. One was that, that the, the funds themselves weren't audited, there's a requirement of an annual audit, but, and, but the annual audit does not have to be done by your actual auditor. The annual audit can be done by someone internally who's not involved in the process. But according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they do require once every three years for an actual audit, independent auditor to come in and audit them. You know, when we started auditing the city in two thousand and nineteen, it was unsure, the schools were unsure when the last time that audit had taken place. That portion has been resolved, I know they have contracted with another firm to perform those audits. So, that, that piece had been taken care of in two thousand and twenty. The remaining item is how the bill, how the bills are processed. So, what happens is, each school has a checking account that has basically, I would say, some seed money in it. And the amount that can be in that checking account is set by the school committee. So, what happens is, as the schools run their activities, their, their checking account, you know, gets drained down, and as it's getting close to being, you know, fully spent, they'll send the invoices upstairs here to City Hall to ask for money to be replenished. The practice recommended by DESI, the Department of Education, is that it hand, it gets handled through the normal warrant process. So, you know, once, so they've, they cut the checks, and then the invoices get sent up to the city auditor's office for review, and then processed like any other, you know, invoice through the warrant. And then, once the city auditor's office approves it, it would go to the treasurer's office, they would cut a check back to the schools to replenish the account. The current process, the process that was, that, that's in place now, it was bypassing the city auditor, city auditor's office and the warrant, and just going directly to the treasurer's office. So, they would send the invoices up to the treasurer, who would review the invoices and then replenish the funds, and then notify the city auditor on the side to say, hey, we just replenished the account, you know, record that in the ledger. That, that's not the recommended practice of DESI, so, you know, that, that was our one comment remaining on the student activities, that they comply with, you know, the best practices of, of the Department of Ed.
And, and just to be clear, so that everyone knows what student activities are, it's the yearbook, the prom, the dances, the field trips. It's things that are outside of the normal government activity, it's, it's, it's money that you collect from the students, that you have a stewardship to, to protect those monies, and make sure they're spent properly. And about twenty years ago, there was no audit requirement, and there was a lot of fraud, because the, the, they would collect the money from the students, but then they wouldn't know if it got spent on the field trip, or, or, or dance, or whatever. And the people that were administering those knew there was no audit, so they would, a lot of stuff was done in cash, so they would, they were taking the money. So, these regulations went into play, that if you're gonna run the activity through the, through the city and through the schools, you gotta follow all these regulations. So, that's just to kind of give you a backdrop of, of what this is all about.
We're aware of that, and we've embraced that, because again, it's accountability, you know, also opens up a fair process. As you stated prior, I'm, I'm celebrating my twentieth year on the council, and there was a lot of conversation about, you know, different type of athletic events, where all the cash was taken, and short cash was returned, and, and since that, the council with the city manager prior, and it's, and our new city manager have been keeping a close eye on that. So, that's definitely something, we wanna make sure that everyone feels that it's a safe practice. Yes, Councilor Garcia?
Is the correct process being, taken care of now? So, are they, is the school going back to the auditor and getting?
For fiscal twenty-one, no.
Okay.
We're in fiscal twenty review, and you'll still have one more audit after that.
Okay, but is it happening?
Twenty-two, I've worked with the treasurer's office and the school department to make those corrections.
All right.
All right, the next comment was related to stagnant special revenue accounts. A number of years ago, the Department of Revenue, who's actually the former director of the Division of Local Services, requested that the audit firms kind of go through and, and, you know, comment on if cities and towns have stagnant accounts, because not only is it money that's not being used, it also, you know, it's cumbersome when they're, when you're closing the books, you know, and you're also reporting your, your balance sheet to the Department of Revenue, and if you have, you know, a hundred stagnant accounts there, it's just, it, it makes the process cumbersome. So, they, they requested that we go through during our audits and, and make a comment regarding, are there any stagnant accounts? You know, and try to get, you know, communities to, to go through the process of investigating the accounts and seeing, you know, is the purpose still, still active? You know, can the funds be used? If not, they recommended that, you know, the excess funds just be closed out to the general funds. So, I believe, at the end of two thousand and twenty, there were, in the special revenue funds, almost a hundred different accounts totaling over six hundred thousand dollars that had not had any activity in the previous year or two.
How many accounts?
There was ninety-eight accounts totaling six hundred thousand dollars. And, and again, this could be old grants, old revolving funds, you know, gift, gift funds where the money was taken in, you know, five years ago, but, you know, they were fully spent, so the purpose is, you know, has been completed. Or it just could be funds that the department doesn't know they have. In addition, there's also some capital project accounts, but you guys are actually, you, you do a very good job of, of cleaning up those accounts over time, and using them in the CIP process. So, I, you know, however, at the end of two thousand and twenty, there was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in those accounts that, that could be rehashed and reused and put towards other capital projects.
You can also use up to fifty thousand to pay back debt when you have stagnant capital projects, so you can do up to fifty thousand a year. It has to be appropriated, but you can do that also under the Municipal Modernization Act.
First, you have to know it's there, though, correct?
Right, you gotta know it's there.
In this instance, you're speaking, whether they know that it was there, we would've done that. Okay, thank you.
And that was it for the, the unresolved comments. We did have some prior year comments that were resolved by the city during the year. You completed a fraud risk assessment, you recorded your market value adjustments in your investments, and there was an issue with retirement deductions that were also, that was also completed.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Councilor, any questions? Mr. Manager, you have anything you'd like to add, after hearing? Where?
No, just to reiterate that, unfortunately, this, this financial information is somewhat dated, it's almost twenty, twenty-plus months ago. We're still in very good financial condition based on, and you saw the certification of free cash, you pulled fourteen million dollars for the quotes of two thousand and twenty-one, so I do expect that when the books gets fully audited for two thousand and twenty, we will continue to begin reasonably good financial.
What about some of the concerns, or some of the things they want us to be up to date with that was highlighted? Have we taken some interest in?
So, they're all just, you know, they're time-consuming, tedious process, so especially the revenue accounts, we know, there's these old accounts that exist, they have these small dollars, and they-
I'm sorry, Mr. Sir, I'm sorry?
Hold the quarter, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, all of the items in the manager, management letter are ones that we are aware of. They're ones that we work to resolve, but they're, they tend to take a lot of time to just get through, and so, we chip away at them as time allows. So, for example, the special revenue accounts, all these accounts that, there's a hundred of them. They have relatively small dollar values in all of them, but totally, they add up to six hundred thousand. Yes, that's not insignificant, but in a two hundred-plus million dollar budget, it's not all that material. So, it's a matter of prioritizing the time of the auditors, and saying, okay, you know, we have so many other things we're trying to accomplish. When the auditor has time, he, in his office, turns its attention and starts chipping away at some of those accounts, so we can close them out. And typically, we come to the council and say, we've closed out these accounts, we wanna transfer this money. So, for example, for Monday night, I have a letter to you to close out four old school department capital projects, and move that money to a new capital project that the, at the school committee, the school department wishes to do. So, we do chip away at these things, but they take a little time.
But isn't that something we've done in the past also? And if we have, which I believe we have, why are they still showing up as really, you know, a hundred items without attention?
We've probably chipped away at a hundred of them, and now we're down to a hundred. So, we will continue to chip away at them and close them out as we can. But as I said, this is, you know, this amount of money in these accounts is not something that's gonna materially impact our finances. So, we do it when we can, but it's a constant process by the auditors, and pretty much every month, when I meet with the auditor, we talk about closing out some old accounts, and usually, I'm identi- together, we're identifying accounts, and we say, okay, try to spend some time this month, and by next month, let's see if we can close out these accounts, free up this little amount of money, because I have a project I wanna do with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the manager?
Makes it difficult to be trying to decipher down the number when we're closing out a count.
The goal is to close out more than we open.
Yes.
Agreed.
Any other questions for the manager? All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other questions for our management team here, given us the overview? Any questions?
Let's quickly see them again in the summer time, the end of summer.
We usually-
I would, I would say, yeah, yeah.
And then we'll be caught up.
Yeah.
So, we'll be through twenty-one, yes, that's where we need to be, because we're still in June, so we won't close it until, late September, or, or October. And then the audit happens after that, so we just have to track.
Okay, so, thank you, we appreciate your time. Again, we thank you for your patience with us, and apologize for the tardiness. But again, it's something required that we have to do, and we look forward to getting up to speed on the two thousand and twenty-one year, and moving forward to how we can continue to consolidate, and continue to work with our treasurer and his staff, and make sure that we are meeting all the requirements. I didn't wanna ask what the penalties are for having these, you know, unclosed accounts with up to six hundred thousand, if they are, but I'll ask that question next time, thank you. All right, no further business for the council, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.